Excellent. I'd like to welcome you all to the Village Council Meeting of Monday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Millicent Wolf?
Present.
Commissioner Wolf?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Here, thank you. Let's all stand for the pleasure of the Legions.
I declare the Legions to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If you have any packets this evening, a draft of our regular council meeting minutes from December thirteenth or previous meeting, questions, comments, I would seek a motion to approve the minutes at this time.
So move.
Second.
Bring a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine or have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and may be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A to adopt ordinance two thousand and twenty-two oh one, ordinance relating taxes levy at the Village of Pales Park, County Illinois, the ordinance informs the county clerk's office to not levy property taxes for the tax year two thousand and twenty-one relating to the payment of principal and interest to bond bonds in calendar year two thousand and twenty-two totaling one hundred and twenty-two thousand, in fact, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Item B to verify payment of invoices on the mortgage dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and nine cents. Item C to ratify payment of invoices on the mortgage dated January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of sixty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. Item D to ratify the supplemental mortgage dated January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two for manual checks, payroll, and recurring mortgage transfers in the amount of six hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Item E to acknowledge that the Chicago Softland Convention and Visitors Bureau is our conventional business leader bureau on project for the marketing promotion of the tourism industry. Item F to approve payment to taxi bus service for fifty-seven rides provided to Pales Park residents from May first, two thousand and twenty, to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Finally, item G to approve payment of invoices on the mortgage dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. But motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Bring a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes. Commissioner Reed? Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Items that hold business can be brought back to the council at this time. Board of Commissioners and committee recommendations. I have... Just get to that. So the first item on our agenda, if I can find it.
Oh, it's in the packet.
It's on the packet.
I don't know, I didn't see it, so I thought maybe I just took it off.
I saw...
It should have the white little button.
You know what, it's just not in a nice spot. I did see it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Sorry for that delay. Our first item is to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-two oh three, an ordinance approving certain front, side yard, and rear yard setback variations for one-two-four-four-one Elm Street. The ordinance states the Village Council approves and adopts the findings and recommendations of the zoning board of appeals for a thirty-four point one-four foot variation from the sixty-five point five-four foot minimum front yard setback requirement of section twelve-sixty-eight point oh-one E, eleven point two-eight foot variation from twenty-nine point seven-eight minimum side yard setback requirement of section twelve-sixty-eight point oh-two F, and twenty point five-eight foot variation from the fifty-foot minimum year rear yard setback requirement of section twelve-sixty-eight point oh-two G of the Pales Park Village Code relative to the construction and attached garage and screen porch in regard to the existing single-family residence at one-two-four-four-one Elm Street. So, a request for variations has been made. The subject property consists of a single substandard parcel, point five on acres, zone five on a single-family residential. The existing home is not conforming as it approaches into the required front setback. The applicant is proposing an attached garage and screen room addition. The garage addition is being pursued by the applicant as the existing garage, which, while intended as a two-car garage, does not allow for the parking of two vehicles in the garage due to the location of a stairway inside their garage. The applicant presented a concept to staff in the spring of two thousand and twenty-one proposing an addition that matched or was aligned with the front side of the existing attached garage. However, that could not be pursued because it would require a front yard variance request greater than that allowed at the time by section twelve-sixty-four point oh four of the Village Code. In October, the applicant revised the plans and formally submitted for the zoning board of appeals meeting in December with a request of variances to the required front side and rear setbacks. In general, the ZBA expressed concerns about the requested side yard variance. I proposed side yard at twelve feet and inquired about an alternative design that would better take advantage of the existing garage while also being further away from the side north line than proposed. Based on this feedback and taking advantage of ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty, which eliminated the limit on the amount of variance that could be requested, the applicant submitted revised plans, which were considered by the ZBA after January twelfth, two thousand and twenty committee. This revision, which is similar to the original concept submitted to the staff in this past spring, has proposed garage addition matching the front side of the existing attached garage. Front side and rear setback variances are still required. However, the requested side setback is eighteen point five E, which is an increase from the twelve feet which was proposed in December. So, the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing and discussed the requested variance. Again, as we stated before, is December eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meetings. Concurring with findings, as all of the staff report, the zoning board of appeals moved to recommend that the Village Council approve the thirty-one point four foot front yard setback, eighteen point five foot side yard setback, and twenty-nine point four-two foot rear yard setback. Rather, the setbacks is required by section twelve-sixty-eight point oh-two E at each of the Village Code to allow the construction of garage additions, screen room addition on the property commonly known as one-two-four-four-one Elm Street. The vote was five yes, one no, and one excellent. Staff received written comments from two leaders in support of the requested variance via the December ZBA meeting. I move... So, the question is whether we're... We'd like to adopt the ZBA recommendation, which was a five-to-one vote for these various setbacks. I know the petitioner, the applicant, is here this evening. I don't know if you want to speak to it, you certainly don't need to, you've done that at the public hearing.
Yeah, we might hope the public hearing's worth...
Could we ask you to step up so that the people who are possibly listening can hear you?
So, originally petitioned for this, talked about the zoning changes. When we originally proposed the garage addition based on the current zoning laws that we had in place, I couldn't put an addition, a garage addition, that was equal to the front of my house with the way my property goes. My property goes more south where everyone else's goes east-west. So, we proposed to move it back further, so it was less of a... It was met with the zoning variances, but it proposed a wider garage because of the changes. We originally moved it up, we can now position one garage door to the front chute because it's a side entrance, and then just add twelve feet of additional garage, so then we get a true two-car garage without approaching too much on the side property.
Right. So, basically, the garage is consistent with the house in terms of its setback.
Correct.
Which is not conforming.
Correct.
So, instead of keeping it there and moving it closer to the side yard, close to your neighbor, you now with the new design moved it further away from your neighbor.
Well, with the... The original design wasn't accepted because of the variances, so I went back to our architect, and we drew it up to where the garage was set at further, but in doing so, we had to do a two-car garage. So, we were, I forget exactly how much, it was like twelve feet from the property. Now, with the change in the zoning variance, we can bring it up to be level with the house, and now we can pivot one garage door so it's front, so we can use that bay, and then just go twelve feet and go into the front of the garage then. So, we're not going in front of the side of the house, but we're also not, we're approaching less on the property.
Right. Is there anyone who has any questions?
Nope.
The only comment I would make is that this is the first instance where ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty is being used. That's the one we approved last year. They did away with the incremental percentages for the variances. So, once again, hopefully, this is the first of many to come utilizing that standard. That's all I have, thank you.
And this is a perfect example because, again, the existing structure is not compliant, and he's not increasing that compliance to the front of the house by this construction.
Correct.
So, I would entertain a motion.
Do you want to read the whole thing? I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero three, an ordinance approving certain front, side yard, and rear yard setback variation at the property of one-two-four-four-one Elm Street. The ordinance states the Village Council approves and adopts the findings and recommendations of the zoning board of appeals for thirty-four point one-four foot variation from the sixty-five point five-four foot minimum one yard setback requirement of section twelve-sixty-eight dot oh-one per N E. And eleven point two-eight foot variation from the twenty-nine point seven-eight minimum side yard setback requirement of section one-two-six-eight point oh-two per N F. And a twenty point five-eight foot variation from the fifty-foot minimum rear yard setback requirement of section one-two-six-eight point oh-two per N G of the Pales Park Village Code relative to the construction of the attached garage and screen porch in regard to the existing single-family residence at one-two-four-four-one Elm Street. That's about as big as a garage.
So, we have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes. Commissioner Reed? Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Thank you for all your effort and you have a good this process.
I appreciate the help.
Yes. Information and updates, Public Works of Streets and the Reporters, Commissioner Millicent Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a couple of items on the agenda, the first being regarding our two thousand and twenty-two MFT pavement program. In late December, Lindahl finished the shoulder work for the two thousand and twenty-two MFT pavement project, which was the only work remaining. I have here the pay estimate number four, and it's the final payment in the amount of eighty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents, and I'm asking for approval. Anybody have any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve pay estimate number four and final for the two thousand and twenty-two MFT pavement improvement project to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated in the amount of eighty-five thousand, one thirty-eight point twelve.
Second. A motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millicent Wolf?
Yes.
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, the motion carries.
The next item is regarding new sanitary sewer sewage pumps for three of our lift stations. The utility department keeps one extra pump for each sanitary lift station to ensure continuous operation in the event a pump fails. Recently, Public Works had to switch out pumps at three lift stations rather than rebuild a ten-to-twelve-year-old pump for each of these. We would like to purchase three new pumps from Metropolitan Industries who manufactured the original station equipment. The lift stations and pumps are our Old Creek Lift Station, and the pump cost would be thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Shadow Ridge Lift Station in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, and the Romega Lift Station in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, are a total cost of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. And this money has been budgeted in the sewer fund to purchase these new pumps. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'd like to move, make a motion to waive the bidding process and approve the three proposals from Metropolitan Industries totaling three, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars to purchase three new sanitary sewer sewage pumps.
Second. Bring a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millicent Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
And the last item I have on the agenda is regarding a proposal from Monroe Equipment to replace the plow on the two thousand and six International Truck. The plow, control equipment, mounting equipment, and part of the front end of truck number two, which is a two thousand and six International, needs to be replaced. The equipment was repaired in-house in early December, but our mechanic warned that the repair would not likely hold all winter. Public Works received a price for the work from Monroe Truck Equipment, who has fitted all of our trucks with plows. The cost for the replacement and installation of the equipment is thirteen thousand, twenty-five dollars, and there is money in the budget under vehicle maintenance for this item. Any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from Monroe Equipment in the amount of thirteen thousand, twenty-five dollars to replace the plow and related equipment on truck to the two thousand and six International Truck.
Second. Bring a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Millicent Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yep.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
And that is all I have this evening, just otherwise, you know, our guys have been out, they've plowed, they've salted, our roads are looking great by comparison of other places I've driven around, so thank you to the Public Works team, but just take your time, be careful out there. And I conclude my report.
Excellent, thank you. Moving into public property report, I was going to read this report, Commissioner, unless you would like to do so.
I can handle it, sir, if you don't mind.
That would be perfect.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you for helping me out with ordinance two oh three. Don't have enough oxygen, would not have been able to get through it, so thank you. I can tell you from personal experience, a homeowner should pay attention to ice, you know, ice can create a problem in their homes. I had the misfortune of having the back, my back betters fall off last year due to building the ice, and a few thousand dollars lingered, it was repaired. So, it's true, ice dams can cause serious damage to your roof. Refrozen water along the roof edge creates an ice dam and melting snow running down the roof against a backup underneath the roof covering. This is what was sold, sheeping and leak into the attic unless there is a barrier above the sheeping. Check for water stains or moisture in the attic. Water stains and moisture may indicate that ice dam has formed. To help prevent ice dams, keep active. On the basements roof, make sure to install a water-colored barrier underneath the shingles. This acts as an extra layer of protection and helps prevent water from seeping inside the building. During the time period up to seven-nine January eighteenth, the building department processed total encuments, resulting in sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents in cumulatants. Previous total, two hundred and five dollars, not even forty-two dollars, except the second six. Program two-two-zero-two-two-two seven, and there's an extra number down there, the total of five, which I just spelled. Moving on, the next matter of your consideration is approval of an ordinance accepting and including the publication of revised official zoning map for the Village of Pales Park. The municipal code sixty-five I O C S five slash eleven dash thirteen dash nineteen requires the Village to publish this account and zoning map annually by the end of March. The published zoning map should include all zoning changes from the preceding year. If there were no changes to the zoning map in the preceding year, the publication is not required. The following represent changes to the zoning map this past year. Annexation and R dash one dash A zoning for property located at seven-nine-five-zero west one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh street. Disconnection of four point seven-six acres on Main Street, and the disconnection of the majority of the delinious property by a three-hundred-foot wide buffer strip is to remain. Staff recommend approval of revisions to the zoning map. And prior to make a motion, I would ask if there are any comments or objections.
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
Hearing none, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero two, an ordinance approving the publication of revised official zoning map for the Village of Pales Park. End of this session.
Second. Bring a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yep.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
Mr. Director, if you're there, do you have anything to add to that stat?
No, thank you, no, that's fine.
Okay, that concludes my report, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public health and safety, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report from the tenth of January through the twenty-third year of our law, two thousand and twenty-two. Cookie broke a single adjudication ticket and two traffic tickets, provided no written warnings and two verbal warnings, took eighteen case reports, an additional eleven accident reports, arrested an adult, no juvenile arrests, impounded that adult's vehicle, and performed six senior checks with an additional eight citizen assists. So, that's what the Pales Park PD has been up to over the last couple of weeks. And then I just have a couple of quick announcements. The last weekend of January, this coming last weekend of January will be our tabletop exercises in terms of dealing with disasters, active shooters, and community crises. We run these every year. It's to help individuals across the village government to better understand their role in an emergency while providing a safe space to think critically about possible scenarios that might impact village operations. This is an incredibly important exercise for us. It's important that we have an opportunity to take a look at where we might be making mistakes, where we might have things that are going wrong, or procedures that aren't used every day that might be forgotten, and we use the tabletop to highlight trouble spots, gaps, areas that need addressing and fixing before an actual event occurs. So, we'll be involved in that the last weekend. We're also having a all-day active shooter training on January the thirtieth. We're going to work on our strategies for dealing with active shooters to ensure the safety of both officers and citizens. It tests our active shooter response plans and fine-tunes them as necessary. We will have Pales Park officers participating along with actors that allow the officers training to build skills ranging from situational awareness, target recognition, rapid deployment, coordination on the scene, and much more than that. And then the last thing I'd like to talk about is the Super Bowl is coming up on February thirteenth. I'm just reflecting on the games over the weekend. They were the most amazing football games I have seen in my adult life, and my hope to goodness that the Super Bowl is half as good, usually isn't, but it does make you wonder about the Bears when you see games like that. Anyway, the Super Bowl is America's, one of America's most highly anticipated sport events. As the game approaches, which is February the thirteenth, we want to remind everybody to designate a sober driver because fans don't let fans drive drunk. And we'll be running our Pales Park contact program, and we'll have more on that as we get closer to the actual game itself. The chief is out of patrol tonight, so he's not available to sit at the desk, and I don't have anything else further unless anybody has any questions or issues.
Commissioner, there are some, one of the lessons had a question on Facebook today, and I think I know the answer, but like your guys, and that is concerning situations where you get stuck in the snow and with a child. Isn't that a situation to call nine-one-one?
Yes. Well, it never fails to amaze me how reticent people are to call nine-one-one when they're actually in the middle of an emergency. So, if you're in any situation where you need assistance, a response from somebody, not monetary assistance or those kinds of things, call nine-one-one. The worst that will happen is that we'll tell you what you need to do. The best that will happen is we'll be there to tell you what you need to do. So, we're more than happy to respond. We respond for a lot of different things.
And also coordinating with Public Works. So, you call nine-one-one, the police get ahold of Public Works, something can happen. Now, obviously, we have a huge snowstorm, resources may be deployed, and we may not be able to handle something, but at least if you call, you have...
You've got another set of resources at your disposal that we'll be more than happy to assist.
I just want people to understand that that's a response. You live in a small town where you have people that are responsive, and we are responsive. So, I just want the clerk...
Yeah, I mean, just to expand the point for a second or two, there is no penalty for calling nine-one-one. We don't have a list of people who have inappropriately dialed nine-one-one. We don't want to ever have a list, we would never develop such a list, but the worst that could possibly happen is that we'll say, here's how you're going to deal with that, and we don't show up. I can't even imagine a scenario like that, but no one's going to say, why are you calling us? The dispatcher won't say it, the police won't say it. Calling nine-one-one from your cell phone actually helps us because there's a lot of embedded electronic information that comes from a nine-one-one call that's made from a cell phone. I know that people still have landlines, I was talked out of mine a while ago, but the bottom line is that we could find you if something terrible is going on, and for some reason, you can't call back, which we can't do on your home phone unless you've already given us the address. So, don't ever, 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 did I say that right? Ever hesitate to call nine-one-one if you find yourself in a spot where you think you need help. If it's not from the police, we could put together a group of other... If it's not from the police, we can put together a group of other people to come and help you. That amounts, that's social situations as well.
And the 911 folks are trained as well to marshal resources.
Absolutely. And, you know, you may not be, you may think you were in Pales Park, and you're not necessarily in Pales Park. So calling like the after-hours non-emergency number can be kind of a problem. First of all, you have to remember the number. Second of all, it doesn't give us the same kind of information that a 911 call does. So I've heard people say, well, I didn't want to bother them. Oh, go right ahead. It's not a bother on our side of the fence. And what is a bother is when you hear a story where you could have done something, and you didn't, you weren't able to do it because no one ever told you that help was needed. Please, if you've got a problem, call 911. We'll work it out with you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
So that concludes our report.
Thank you. So we have a matter before us. The next agenda item is the activity of gaming. We have a revised ordinance in our packet. Here's my suggestion. And no one, whoever from the public wants to speak, but what I would suggest we do as a council is the following. So to date, we do not have a Class A applicant for video gaming. So there are folks who have said, we may consider that in the future. But we don't have anyone right now who's doing that. So my suggestion is that we take that off the table. We do, we've received a lot of this feedback. We had interest from Cog Hill Golf Course for the Class G license. So what I would ask that we do is to correct our village attorney to, again, revise the ordinance to eliminate the Class A license. Meaning, when I say Class A, Class G, Class G means golf courses, and there's one. Class A means bars and restaurants. So what we're saying is, we're eliminating that part of the ordinance for now. Doesn't mean that we can't revisit that if our district or our decides to apply, but we're taking that off the table for now. We have one person, one business that has expressed interest, that's Cog Hill. And I would correct that ordinance be revised in three ways. First of all, as I mentioned, to have the ordinance only apply to the Class G golf course category license. Secondly, there has been some public feedback regarding sound emanating from the separate room. I think that is an important part of making sure that video gaming in an establishment does not affect anyone who does not wish to participate. So I'd like us to consider directing our village attorney to make that change. And the final item is that the fees authorized by the state of Illinois have been modified recently, changing the annual fee from twenty-five dollars per year to a maximum of a hundred dollars per year. So I understand we can, we don't have to make it a hundred, but I am suggesting that we do make it a hundred per machine per year. And those would be the three changes that I propose for the amendment to the ordinance that we not consider proposed tonight, but we're directing the village attorney to revise the ordinance in that fashion to bring us back to review and possibly approve at our next fall. With that, I think I want to take some public comment. If anyone from the audience would like to address the council on the video gaming issue. You'll have a chance to have public comment about anything else towards the end of the meeting, but I would just want, if there's anyone from the audience that would like to address us about video gaming right now, if they would just come to the podium, state your name, and make whatever comment you'd like.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Is this even on?
Yes.
My name is Vanetta Wigman. I live at fifty-two Romeo Lane. I was unable to attend the last meeting. I heard there were a few more people here. I know speaking throughout the, since the last meeting, I know other residents wanted to come tonight, but maybe the weather kept them from coming. I'm just going to start by saying that, to me, gambling is an addiction. Gambling can take people's money that normally they would pay bills with. Watching the football games, they talk about, you know, betting for football games, and then right after that is a commercial for, if you have a problem, please contact. I don't think we should be encouraging that. You know, we, we. The whole smoking in restaurants ended because that's an addiction, that's bad for your health. Gambling is an addiction, and it can harm people's health, I feel, if they can't pay their bills or buy food. I noticed in the December sixteenth, Regional East Ezalcrest is going to get a casino. And this sounds like a big thing. It's going to have hotels, it's going to have shopping, it's going to be attractive, it's going to be fun. And it's only, from my house, nineteen miles away from the village hall, it's only fourteen miles away. You don't understand, and I just locked it as Route eighty in Halsted. People can drive fourteen miles to go do something like, you know, and have fun, and have it be a big place, rather than coming here to do it, or having it in, at a golf course, or eventually bars and restaurants. And in the summer, on Sundays, Fred and I like to take our bikes and head to Frankfurt and go to the market. That's thirteen miles from here. We do it every week. People can drive to go gamble, in my opinion. Last week, I wanted to go see a show. It was no longer here at Marcus. It wasn't at Imagine anymore. I drove twenty-six miles to go to Naperville to see it. I don't think we need gambling here. And I wish that the other people who were, you know, talking about coming, but we all know that I've always could be here to say the same thing. So thank you for listening. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the village council on video gaming? All right. So you had heard my suggestion, and that is, I don't know whether we vote on that, we just.
If you would just provide direction to make those amendments, and then you could make a motion and continue this ordinance to the next, the next meeting in February, is it the fourteenth?
Fourteenth. Valentine's Day.
I'll make a motion. Exactly what he just said.
I'll second exactly what you just said that he just said.
All right. We have a motion that basically continues the video gaming issue to the next meeting, that February fourteenth, and directs the village attorney to make some modifications to the ordinance. Second, so we have motion a second. Will the clerk please call the law?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, clerk Eric. Oh, thank you. Manager Ray, I have something for us this evening.
I do. I have one item for council's consideration, and that is our annual intergovernmental risk management agency, or Irma, insurance contribution. Irma has calculated the village's twenty-twenty-two contribution at ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's an increase of about eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand dollars from last year's contribution. Overall, the village's annual payments for non-health-related insurance coverage through Irma has decreased since January twenty-eleven. These increases were realized even though the council has used some of its surplus credit over the years to offset some of our insurance payments. Village's excess surplus credit available for twenty-twenty-two is three hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars. It's an increase over last year. These monies may be used to offset the annual contribution or left in the Irma account to earn investment income at the same rate as Irma's investment portfolio. For the twenty-twenty-two calendar year, staff is recommending that the council use eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars of the reserve amount for an out-of-pocket contribution of ten thousand dollars. And that is the money that is budgeted. The village would still have two hundred and eighty-three thousand five sixty-three left in reserve to cover any needed deductibles during the year and help offset future Irma annual contributions. This also means that the village will not need to budget any deductibles for the upcoming fiscal year twenty-three budget. So it's recommended that the council approve the annual contribution of ninety-nine eight nine nine, a surplus credit of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars be used as an offset for a total annual payment in calendar year twenty-twenty-two of ten thousand dollars.
So, Rick, I'll make the motion, but I have a question. I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure. How the heck did we get a quarter of a million dollars of surplus credit?
Because this council has been working at this for many years. We've been leaving our surplus credit in the investment pool through about twenty-fifteen, when we first started taking and using a portion of that. It's, the investment is done very well. It's earning somewhere, past few years, awards of twelve to fifteen percent.
But there's two aspects. One is the experience factor. And that is, that our projected loss is less than what Irma projects for our risk for our village to.
Correct. We did go up this past year, mainly because some of the policies in the pandemic years have increased, mainly cybersecurity. But we have had a great experience. We do not have a lot of claims. Our experience has been very good over the long haul. In fact, we receive some awards for not having any claims in several departments here. So the experience in Pales Park is very safety-conscious. We take heed in Irma's suggestions, our ordinances, our policies, our procedures, our safety practices are all paying off for us. And, you know, we're almost at a hundred thousand dollars, but we have that surplus credit that's been built up, and this is what the council had intended for it to do, is to keep, you know, that kind of money in our reserve, covering deductibles, and covering, you know, future, offsetting future annual assessments.
Thank you, Manager Bane. So unless there are any other questions, I'd like to move to approve the twenty-twenty-two intergovernmental risk management agency for Irma, annual insurance contribution of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and that a surplus credit of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars be used as an offset, resulting in a total payment of ten thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Anyone have any questions? If not, will the clerk please call the law?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. That's all I have. Thank you. I put the announcements at the back. ZBA meeting cancellation. There is no, there are no agenda items on February ninth, so there will be no meeting. Staff High School art exhibit at McCord Gallery Cultural Center. The McCord Gallery Cultural Center is hosting an artwork exhibition of Amos on some of the Stag High School students. The community is likely to come and review that through January twenty-eighth. More information can be found on cordgallery.org. Village of Pales Park charity drives. Thank you to all who contributed to the holiday charity drives held at the Gaffer Center. The Pales Park cadet program, holiday food drives, benefit the Pales Township Emergency Food Pantry. The village of Pales Park also accepted donations for Plaids and O'Neil Animal Center located in the park. The village also collected donations of cleaning and personal care items to benefit families through Together We Prove. Together We Prove provides resources to families in temporary crisis in twenty-seven communities, including the Pales Township. All three charity drives received many donations and proud to serve the community with so many generous citizens. Thank you. I had heard about animal shelters midway through the pandemic. I don't know if this is currently the case. There really are no animals in animal shelters now?
Well, that's not true.
Okay, so that was my question. So at one point, there's such demand for these animals.
Yeah, I don't know how the demand and supply issues, but I can tell you from personal experience that there are plenty of adoptable cats, dogs, rabbits, ferrets. I even saw a parrot the other day at the local shelter.
So that's information. If you're looking for a pet, the animal shelter is a good place to start. Save animals that could be used in a snow. Citizens and visitors come up here. Anyone like to address the council regarding anything you wish at the present time? There are no such requests. Oh, I'm sorry. You just stepped to the podium.
Back to what you said earlier. The roads look very beautiful and clean, and keeps everyone safe, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
How about your name, just so we know who you are?
Omar.
Omar.
We'll applaud your birth next time.
We saw you at the restaurant with your, you'll be in the other night.
I didn't want to interrupt you. I know someone else interrupted you earlier.
Oh, that's my, that's my job. You know, we're a small community. We like that, so welcome. Thank you. Anyone else love to address the council? There are no such requests. I would seek a motion to adjourn at this time.
The vote?
Yeah, second.
You hear any motion a second? Will the clerk please call the law?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and motion carries. Thank you all, and good evening. It's going to get below zero in the next few days. Please, stay safe.
Or if you know a neighbor that's got a problem, or if you've got a heating issue or whatever, call 911. We'll help.
Yes. That's what we heard. It is no problem.